We've returned from our recess and we'll pick up again with new business. The second item is request approval of contract for the alterations/renovations for the Hazelwood Convenience Center. We have Dale Veras with us, Facilities and Maintenance Director, and I think Stephen King is here as well, our Sawed-Waste Director.
Good evening again.
Yes, sir.
As you're aware, we actually had some changes, design changes for the Hazelwood Convenience Center. One for safety, I guess that would probably be the primary goal, and to be able to make that site more user-friendly, which would more or less be a stepping stone to what other sites would be. And this being, I'm not 100% sure about this, but this being one of the largest sites, it was one of the best places to start with. So, the project was bid out, and we received three bids, it's all red formally. Beyond Construction was the low bid proposal at $84,000. Of course, the prices changed. Through that, you'll see the documents. We had H&amp;M Constructors and Neo Corporation actually bid the project. Both of these bid proposals, the software I use, ProA S T, actually without any subcontractors other than the paving and electrical contractor, I came up with $85,291. Beyond Construction's $84,000. With all subcontractors, I came up to $149,000, which Neo Corporation was under that portion. So, what I'm here to request is actually to approve Beyond Construction as the low proposal and award the contract. But there, I know there's some concerns about the site while construction's been taking place. So, without going above and beyond, what I can do under General Statute 143-129, meeting with a potential contractor, I wanted to set a schedule to give the commissioners and everyone an idea of where and when this project can be started without closing the complete site down. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to tell you where that is.
Please.
So, if Beyond Construction has approved the contract and awarded, the site can actually, they can begin work on August 25th. They can work approximately 15 days pending weather without closing the site. Now, the project has a 60-day completion date, so they can work 15 days without closing the site at all. And this even includes on the Thursdays that the site's closed anyway. So, given those scenarios and those conditions, this allows them to actually do the fence repairs, replace some, install some steel ballers to protect people from running in the fence, grade and prep the new area for exit, and install the new fence and gates. Go ahead and do the saw cutting for the asphalt around where the new pad's going to go, but no removal of asphalt at this point for safety. And then, that will allow them to have time to get all the other materials in place. And on September 15th through October 13th, which will be 30 days, the site would need to be closed for those 30 days for them to be able to remove the asphalt, the concrete, go in, prep everything, get the grade back up, and go ahead and pour the concrete and put the asphalt down, all during that time. So, you know, in the contract documents, there is a $250 a day liquidated damages. The contractor feels comfortable that this can be done and met between September 15th closure and October 13th during that time. Could probably pick up some more days pending weather, but, you know, that's the tentative dates that the contractor felt comfortable moving forward with.
Okay. Any questions, Dale? I think this will end up being a prototype, is that the, that's the plan, right? Because it's one of the two largest sites we have, and that property is owned by the county.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, we don't have any of those restrictions.
Well, there'll be some minor changes on other sites if, continue using those sites for these plans, but basically the pad placement will be a prototype that will just keep moving forward. You know, this one's set up as four actual containers is the way the site's actually set up, with the actual turning radiuses. You enter one area, you leave out of another area, so there's no cross-pattern going back out on Hemlock Street. You actually enter at the lower end of Hemlock Street, and you'll go back out between the Convenience Center and the former DOC.
Dale, why, really, it's widespread in the bids. I would, you would think it'd be a little closer together.
Well, I think the only thing that I can tell by the estimates I did was for sure that Neo Corporation was going to sub the whole project out. They were just going to be a G C overseeing the project. Beyond Construction was speaking with Mr. Allen. He said that they were doing everything but asphalt and electrical because they're not electrical contractors, and of course, they don't have asphalt equipment. So, that's, that would be the difference. And those numbers, I had the same concerns you did, sir, and I actually ran the numbers myself, so they do come in fairly close.
I've just got two questions. One is, can we leave the Moonee Cove site open all the time and maybe some other sites?
I think Stephen can answer his plan for that. Stephen?
Yes, sir.
And signage to let people know, maybe now, that this is going to happen then.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We looked at a couple of options there to try to accommodate all the patrons that use the site, and maybe even a temporary site. Couldn't make all that work, so we are going to open up Moonee Cove and Jones Cove for an extra hour. So, the operating hours will be from 7:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, and we're also going to have them open the days that they're closed. So, Moonee Cove and Jones Cove, both sites will have additional working hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, that's what, that's the best solution we could come up with to accommodate the people that are utilizing the site. And yes, sir, we're going to put banners up, letting them know the exact dates it's going to be closed down. We're going to hand out some flyers. Spoke with David Teague about putting stuff on the Internet. Try to get the word out the best we can to let people know what's going to take place.
I think like you, you know, banner when you go in, that's going, if you use it, you're going to see it until you leave.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Yeah, I think handing out flyers, so you'll be dealing directly with the people who use it.
That's correct.
Perhaps a public service announcement with the local newspapers and so forth would be helpful as well.
Yes, sir. I agree.
And Saturday, you're open Saturday as well. You said Monday through Friday, 7 to 6.
I apologize. Monday through Saturday, 7 to 6.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
That's all right. I just, I didn't want that to get interpreted.
Yeah. Okay.
You're right. You're right.
Any other questions, Stephen or Dale? If not, entertain a motion to approve as low bidder, B. Allen Construction, in the amount of $84,000. Did you have an $85,000 number? Was that for something additional?
If I said $85,000, I made a mistake. It's actually the, it was $84,000.
$84,000, okay.
So, if I said $85,000, the bid tabulation and the bid is $84,000.
$84,000, okay. Would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
You're not open until 6:00 on Saturday though, are you?
That's, that's not the regular hours, but the Jones Cove Convenience Center and the Moonee Cove Convenience Center, just during the construction phase, we'll have it open from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
That'd be great.
Just during that time period.
Even on Saturday?
Even on Saturday.
Usually closes what, 3:00?
No, you, at 5:00. Yes, sir.
Oh, the big, the big place closes at 3:00.
Yeah, yes, sir. The Murph closes at 5:00.
It's good. Good description. Good.
Big place.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the Sheriff again, with a request for approval to purchase a K-9 dog. Welcome, Sheriff.
Hey, good afternoon again. We would request approval and those for a K-9, another K-9 for our office. These funds that are actually located in the Sheriff's Office Drug Forfeiter Funds account, and our Sheriff's Office drug agents have earned these funds through their outstanding work, and there are many drug arrests that they have made. Our K-9 program is very, very important to us here in Haywood County. It's important to our drug task force that we have, but it's also important to the search and rescue mission that the Sheriff is directly responsible for, which is every search and rescue that occurs in Haywood County. Both of our dogs now are search and tracking trained. We would like to get this third dog, have him tracking trained as well as drugs. And one of the reasons we wanted to get this done, we found that our dog supplier was going to teach a class in Asheville beginning August 4th. And what this would do is, this would keep us from paying motel expenses and per diem and lots of travel for this eight-week program that the dog and the handler would go through. It's going to be, so he'll be able to drive back and forth without no more expense to the county.
And of course, as you mentioned, the Drug Forfeiter Fund, which is money seized from drug dealers basically.
Yes, sir, it is.
Is paying for this. And it's, I think it's wise to have another dog. Police dogs or K-9 dogs are not unlike humans in that, given the circumstances, they can be fatigued and have to be taken offline. And if you take one off or two off, if you have a lengthy search and then you have a need for a K-9 for a drug matter, you may not have one or have to contact Boncombe or someplace else and not have one timely. So, I think that's wise planning on your part, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any questions of the Sheriff? If not, would entertain a motion that the purchase of a K-9 dog by the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $14,231, which would include accessories for the animal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Unanimous, thank you. And we have a budget amendment, I believe, to reflect that purchase.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman, on the prior motion, and I may have sneezed in an inaptitude time. I heard a motion and a second, but not a vote on the Convenience Center.
Did I vote? Okay. All in favor? I thought we did. Okay. Unanimous.
On the Convenience Center. Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Okay.
And I have a budget amendment. You've already mentioned this is the drug seizure money. There was about $60,000 in, set aside in prior years for items that are drug-related that the Sheriff would bring to you. So, he certainly has that money available in fund balance. The $14,231 is going to be coming out of fund balance this year, and is some that is reserved for this specific purpose.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Julie? If not, would entertain a motion that the budget amendment as presented be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Julie. We'll continue with the Sheriff, who has a request for a resolution declaring the awarding of a service sidearm, the declared surplus to retiring Haywood County Sheriff's Office, SRO Officer Thomas Beck.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Tommy Beck has been around the Sheriff's Office since 1978, and he has decided that he was going to retire, and he was going to change when Tuscola changed principles. So, Tuscola changed principles, so he decided to retire. And with that, we request the opportunity to be able to give him his sidearm.
Probably make the prior principal feel pretty good. I don't know how it'll make the new principal feel, but... In any event, this is authorized by General Statutes in North Carolina and is, has been a common practice of our Sheriff's Office and County Commissioner for some time, so unless there's any questions or comments, would entertain a motion that the firearm in question for SRO Thomas Beck be declared surplus and awarded to him.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. And we'll continue with the Sheriff for the inmate commissary services contract, which is Attachment 15.
We are requesting approval for our inmate commissary service that has resulted from a competitive bidding process that we put out under General Statute, North Carolina General Statute 143-129 and North Carolina General Statute 143-131. Now, we desired to change to an automated inmate commissary service using caste management system with receipts, reports, and an audit trail to manage and track inmate commissary transactions. After the bidding process, it was determined that Kimball's Commissary Services has the lowest responsible, responsive bid out of the four submitted bids. The system that we are looking at or that we have chosen now, it makes the detention center more efficient. The system takes accountability to a higher level. The automation alone will help us greatly in the area of customer service and in the booking process, as we will no longer handle inmates' money. There is an accounting software system that tracks the inmates' money, and whenever that they start to leave the detention center, they will be given a, it's the same thing as a debit card. It looks just like a credit card, debit card, that'll have the balance, and they will be able to take that and spend that wherever that they decide to spend it. But it'll actually keep us from handling money cash, and as an inmate's family or others comes into our lobby, there'll be a kiosk there for them to actually put money into the kiosk. They won't be going into the office anymore and handing cash to our employees there, and it'll automatically be on their account. Then whenever the inmate decides that he wants to order a commissary item, he will go to the phone there in the pod. He'll pick up the phone, dial the number, and he will order straight from the Kimball Commissary Company. Whenever that that item is delivered to the Sheriff's Office, we will open the package that it comes in, check to make sure that what he has ordered is there. We'll seal it back up and give it to the inmate along with a receipt. All this will be done by an automated system now to where we won't be handling cash, the inmates won't be handling cash, and it's just going to make a better system for us all the way around.
This would reduce the probability of contraband being introduced into the facility as well.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And the low bid was the $84,000?
The low bid, actually, there is not a cost to us as the county. What they, what they do is they just, as an inmate purchases something, then they take that money and they will deduct it from his account. We actually are not, will not be paying Kimball's any money whatsoever.
Provide the service.
That, all they do is provide a service.
Takes some of the operational part of, that you all are having to do, takes you out of it.
It does. Up until now, we have had a, an administrative assistant that had to count cash day in and day out. This will eliminate the need for someone to be there to manage that cash.
Do they deliver this every day?
They only deliver one day a week.
One day?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked that, Sheriff, because I saw on the general contracting worksheet, it had $84,000 as a base bid. I understand what you're saying. What process was used to determine the lowest responsible bid if we didn't use the number?
That's the amount of money that we generally, that we generate each year. If, and I will, if it's okay for me to point to miscorpening, I think...
I'm just trying to understand the process. This is a little bit different bid than what we're normally accustomed to.
Yes, it is.
We submitted a request for proposals and had, it's like 21 pages of a lot of details, and we had a list of criteria that we used to determine which ones would suit our needs for this service. So, it was on an evaluation of points system, so Kimball had 104 points out of the four vendors, so...
Okay, so it's criteria-based on...
Criteria-based, yes.
Based on a response to an RFP?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Julie and I actually had some discussion about this because it is a little bit unique. We decided the best way to do it, even though it is a service, was to bid it, and that's what they did, and we felt like that was the best, the best way to handle it.
We announced it in the paper, and we had it on our website, and I also submitted it to like eight vendors, and four of them responded, so...
Okay. Any questions, Dale? Okay. If not, then would entertain a motion that the contract be approved and awarded to Kimball's for this commissary service for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item seven of new business is to request approval of easement documents from Haywood EMC for placement of new utility poles on the Fines Creek Community Center property, and authorize county officials to execute the easement. We have Chris Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you, you have an easement request from Haywood Electric Membership Corporation. It is specifically for the property that's known as the old Fines Creek School that's currently leased to the Fines Creek Community Association. This is for the placement of two poles and new lines along the front of the building, between the building and the Fines Creek Road, with some other replacements in the back coming to and from the fire department. The map was provided to Karen Hammett, President of FCCA. She distributed that to the board members, met with representatives of HEMC. Subsequently after that meeting, she provided an email to me that stated a couple of conditions that they would like EMC to look at prior, with their approval, not prior to. In a discussion with Wayne Nichols, he said that it would be no problem to avoid the sycamore tree that they wanted to keep intact in front of the school, as well as provide electricity to their stage area. So, they, they seem to be satisfied as FCCA and their board. The HEMC is very satisfied with the ability to change that electrical service as part of their routine maintenance. Dale from Facilities Maintenance has looked at it. He saw no problems with it. Claire from Recreation took a look at the map to see if it impacted any of the future plans for recreation, such as the playground and some of the other things, and she saw no issues with it either.
Okay. Chip, you've looked at the easement documents?
Yes, I did, and they look fine.
Okay.
Fairly typical EMC easements.
Okay. I've driven by and looked at what they're looking at, that doing, and it seems very reasonable.
It seems they're just cleaning up a lot of old lines that crisscross the property that...
Yeah. They've gone all the way down Fines Creek Road.
They're straightening it out.
Yeah.
Maintaining that line.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, would entertain a motion that the easement documents as described be approved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Next up, we have Lynn Collins, approval of an occupancy tax penalty waiver request. Sorry, Lynn, you had to wade through all of this, but pretty interesting, wasn't it?
That's okay. I always learn a lot when I come to these meetings. I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration of an occupancy tax penalty waiver request that the TDA has received. It's on Blue Moon Lodge in the amount of $263.80. It is a new account, and a lot of times when somebody comes in and buys a property and decide they want to rent it, they just think all they have to do is start advertising. And then once they learn of the process, they have to kind of go back and regroup. So, this is what happened in this circumstance. They weren't aware of the process, but once they did find out about the process, they immediately came in, signed up for an account, and paid the tax, but they are requesting a waiver of the penalty. And as you know, the TDA policy is to offer a one-time penalty waiver, and since this is their first offense, the TDA Board of Directors is recommending to waive this penalty.
Okay, and it exceeds $200 or whatever the...
$263.80.
Okay. Any questions there?
Just a little comment. There was discussion, and the whole board was all in agreement, and it's met the criteria that's been followed for several years.
Okay. If no further questions, then would entertain a motion that the tax penalty for Blue Moon Lodge be waived based on representations of TDA.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, we'll move to the ninth item of new business, which is the reappointment of three members to the Adult Care Homes Advisory Committee. Ira?
Yes. Good afternoon. Long-term care, Ms. Budman, Larry Reeves, on behalf of Region A Southwestern Commission, had sent us information requesting the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee reappoint, or that have the following persons reappointed. Monita Dixon and Rabina Russell to three-year terms as members of that committee, and also Carol Larrabee, who is up for reappointment as well, be appointed.
Okay. And if no objection, entertain that motion at this point.
I guess you heard back from Carol Larrabee?
Yes. We have heard back, and she is...
Yeah, it's on the second letter.
Up for reappointment.
So moved.
All in, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Continuing with Ira, we have a reappointment of one member to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
Yes, and the request is for Joanna Swanson to a full three-year term with the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And we have next, the appointment of one member to the Library Board of Trustees. We'll make that selection via ballot.
We got some, I got two, three. I should have put, I should have voted a bunch of them, seeing what you did, seven votes. That would have been good. I wish I had done that now.
Ira?
Yes, it appears that David McCracken is your appointment to the board.
And we'll send letters out. We had excellent, two excellent applicants, and hopeful that the one not selected will reapply.
Yes.
Okay, next is appointment of one member to the Waynesville Planning Board ETJ. Ira?
Yes, and the town of Waynesville voted on this matter to the, and we received the letter, and it said that the town of Wayneville requests approval for a member of the ETJ. One must remember that, one member must be appointed by the Commissioners due to the fact they live in the ETJ, and that was Mr. McDowell, who received five votes from the town of Waynesville.
Okay.
It's a recommendation to you. Patrick McDowell.
I would entertain a motion then that Patrick McDowell be designated as the Waynesville Planning Board ETJ representative for the town of Waynesville.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Is there any other business?
We don't have any call session right now?
No, we can, if you want to.
I think we should. We need to have a call session. We can discuss a few things. Just kidding. He's testing you in the hour.
All right. If there's no other business, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous, thank you.